Wana si fue, aleluia. Ah, every Sanambe de la ni mbe welcome to the service. Kamu yuki ngereza, tu beke soini, tu beke aribu waibare. Na, ashkuru. Ashkuru Mungu, wa sabinje, juwa pinie leo. Na wakati wa mame tu patiwa weza. Ah, kuganda era kitu cha kitu cha enzi. Weza pokuia putoa wa kwa kere. So, tumekwa tu kistane kitabu cha wa efeso. Na tumefanya mstariwa Kwanza. Ali mstariwa Sita, wa Satan. Wa hii osikera leo tanga tu elele kwa mstariwa Sita. Kuna meki pala mba Mungu, kepene weza kutufunisha. Na niambi la tu kwa mba, utafaidika na imasoma ya bibilia. So, kamu na bibilia ya koo, tu fara. What comes to a person, kamu wa ine. Here kuja mstariwa Sita. Ephesians chapter 4, last Sunday it will cover verses 5. Abad koo tu nazumuzia, one Lord Jesus. Ah, let me see. Asa tu isemkuwa si fukua tu zboa, one Lord, one faith, one baptism. So, tu kacha mwa, mbe one Lord, one faith, paratika kaba mbe one baptism. So, leo tu la ngaria mbe one God. And Father of all, who is above all, through all and in you all. So, wa kifuke mutoa Mungu, kile pola la adika apa, ali pola kia adika nsewa wa efeso. Deko abia komba, tu kwa Mungu moja, baba moja, amani yo kwa dani kwe tu wote, dani ayote. Ah, unaheto shangani kuani ni ya nasema one God. Wa nasema one God. Wa nasema wa, one God, wa nasema one God and Father of all. Wa saba muna kuta kwa mba katika imani nyingine. Diwa wa nasema kwa mba, there is one God in other faiths or other religions. They declare that there is only one God. Na some faith, wa nasema kwa mba, there is more than one God. Of fun ukena kwa Hinduism. Wa wa lazumuzia, there are so many Gods. So, every God has a purpose. So, kulingana kwa Hindu, Mungu kitu flani, Mungu kitu flani, Mungu kitu flani. So, every God has its purpose. Kuru kuje kwa, kwa nuwe tu amano Islami na wa lazumuzia kwa mba, there is only one God. But the difference in a camp, in the fact ya kwa mba, the Bible God is a father. But the Muslim God, the other religion God is not a father. So, apa, paula na kuta kwa kia saba kwa one God and Father. There's a definite, a definite, a definite differentiation. Ya kwa mba, the God we worship is also a father. But other religions tu kwa kwa mba, there's no that relationship. Of father and son, or father and daughter relationship in the other religions. So, this is what the differentiation, amani tu tafautisha, lazile religio zingine, na imani zile zingine. So, kwa hii, osiona kuani ni akosos specific. Na kusema kwa mba, one God, one Father of all. Asa kuwa kwa mba, one God, one Father, but a Father of all. So, anybody can qualify to become a son or a daughter of this God who is our Father. Cause absolutely, as you have accepted Jesus Christ as your personal Savior. Unafanyika, do who are yes suprisal, Christ becomes your brother. And as become to your Father, your brother, God the Father becomes the Father of us all. So, there's no discrimination, there's no election, there's no differentiation. Whether we are Houdi. Ah, wa Afrika, Luzongo, there's no differentiation. So long as you call upon the one God, who is a Father of us all, ata muna qualify to call him Father. And for that reason, there's a deeper meaning for the one Father. Everybody, not everybody can become a Father. Ekiswa n'okwe, we can become a Father, ata baba kusaa. Allezepoa, the biological Father, but in essence is not a Father. Cause sa bumbaba ni una tagana kwa katika maisha koo. Akushuguli kie, ah make sure kwa mba, you're growing and going in the right direction. That person qualifies to become a Father. Ma na dokta, una kuta kwa mba, ndio baba muzazi, na wuti baba mlezi. So, baba mlezi, diwa kuna vadi ku liko the biological Father. Because any man can make a woman pregnant. But not every man can become a Father. So, in this case, tunambi ya kwa mba, one God, one Father. Meaning that mutoa Mungu, if you are a Father. Anytime you have issues, you cannot start with the Father. Na howta tu mana muto kwa mbie dani? Eh, mwe ndoka mbie dani, ali fa ni, ni, ah, ah. Because he is your Father, you have every right to go in his presence. With a declaration saba kwa mba, you are my Father and this is my name. So, apart from the fact kwa mba de Mungu, akosos willing not to remain as a God. But also to become a Father. Ma na katika de miyenge, Mungu de Mungu katika zile lini. He's not approachable, he's not even, has no emotions about you. He doesn't care about you, he is God. But our God is different. He's concerned by our every emotion and whatever we go through. As a Father, he wants to get involved in our daily issues. Na diwa paula, diwa paula, perikia saba kwa mba, we have one God who is a Father of all. So, sionaka kwa mba, du biyango, apana better chances ku liko. No, we are all equal, lafa saba kwa mba, who is above all and through all. And in you all. So, this God who is our Father, there is nothing to be compared to this God. There's nothing to be compared to this Father. Wherever you go, there's no one who can be compared to this God or this Father. De saba remember when de Mungu, wa weza yote. Hakuna, Mungu kapawewe. Because he's above all, he's the only God, he's the only living God. He's the only God who responds and answers. The other Gods, they don't respond, they don't answer. And some of these Gods are the imagination of men. Men have created, de wa Mungu wa da da, wa mechoga vinjago, na kuviita Mungu, na kuviitola sacrifices. But this God of ours is a living God who can communicate. That's all na kwa mba, be specific and understand ya kwa mba, we have only one God. And a Father of all, who is above everything else. And is in us all, all of us who have accepted Jesus Christ. So, nuku ya kuda ya. Murali mukubwale Christ Jesus kama wala na kujo maisha koo. Ye ye piya na famika baba ya koo. Na utakuwa kwa mba katika dia zako, ata kongosa, na ata kodomisha. So, droku kie ba kwa saba, saba, bina saba kwa mba, but unto everyone of us. Is given grace according to the measure of the gift of Christ. So, apa kuna kitu tanga tu elele tuwa Mungu? When Paul writes the Church of Ephesians, na kwa mbe kwa mba. But as much as God is our God, as much as God is our Father. As much as God is in all of us, but understand, kitu moja. That everyone of us has been given grace. So, kile pola saba kwa mba, none of us is lacking grace. But all of us have grace. Tu me okoka kwa neema. Na cause sa baba pokoko kwa neema, tunatrembe katika neema, tunatrembe katika neema. Na maana neema, or the meaning of the word grace, is a merited favor. Nikibani amati uja faniya kazi. Una kuta tu mbe inaputia de kia, si kwa sa baba wene msomi. Si kwa sa baba wene msoisa, si kwa sa baba utenagi dandi. Si kwa sa baba ezelo katika kavida flani. Si kwa sa baba ezelo katika kote in Afrika. Yadi onapana tu kibani pasiku kufanya chochote. Niwa saba kwa mba, na kaka tu elele ja mmoja. Ata kamo de Mungu ni wetu sisu wote. Ata kamo de Mungu ni baba wetu sisu wote. Lakini elewa kila moja wetu, tu me patiwa neema tafauti na munkine. Niwa maana kwa paula perikia kasa ma kwa mba, I am what I am by the grace of God. Ma na kuta kwa mba, ungiya lekania pola unashanga. How comes paula wa koka nyuma? How comes paula putia kena, the other disciples of Jesus Christ? But here tu kia, there are the things that Paul did, zile shinda some of their apostles. So, niwa kwa hipoka saba kwa mba, don't wonder, don't ask questions. Don't compare me with any other apostle. They have done what they have done, and have done what have done. Na kile kime tu sa, ndio ku fanya kila tu me fanya, it is by the grace of God. As much as all of us are called apostles, we have been given different graces. According to the will and the purpose of God. Na niwa kuta kwa mba, putia saba kwa mba. Peter has been given grace to reach the Jews. But I, Paul, have been given grace to reach the Gentiles. I manishika kwa mba, paula hange ubilia wa ya Houdi wa koke. Paula hange funisha wa ya Houdi neno la Mungu, kwa kuseku li skia. Ba haga ya ubilia. Lakini una kuta kwa mba katika ile neema paula lipatiwa, aliko more effective kwa mataifa ku liko wa ya Houdi. Now, after the same case, Peter nine, aliko more special grace to minister to the Jews ku liko Paul. So, kamu kuwa na kusanyiko, maana wa ya Houdi wa meja. Paula kuwa the most effective kua unumiwa ya Houdi. Kwa sa baba wene patiwa neema ya kua unumiwa ya Houdi. Lakini Peter, sorry, Peter aliko more neema kua unumia wa ya Houdi. So, Peter neswama kwa holi meja wa ya Houdi, ala sekuwa ubilia, Peter liko more effective ku liko Paul. Lakini naki fika kwa mataifa, wasima misha Peter na Paul. Paula hange more effective ku liko, Paula hange more effective ku liko Peter. Cause sa baba paula liko mepatiwa neema ya oto mataifa. Na niwa kuta kuna wakati Peter olira ku tenele ya Paul. Na wakana kua unumiwa visuisa. Lakini wato wakatuka Jerusalim, kuja ku tenele ya Paul na Peter maana walekuwa. Wa nipofika, Paul Peter liko na wato wakatuka Jerusalem wa ya Houdi. Peter kaza kujiteka na, ikabini paula mukeme, amambi ya Paul Peter, Peter. Ineze kanani kufanya mbe kama haya. Lakini una kuta kwa mba, neema ile pola walekuwa nayo, angeza kustahinili. Hata nani ya uje, maana na lakini liko kwa wato mataifa. Lakini Peter kwa sa baba na kai kokama ya Paul, niwa kuta kwa mba sasengine. Aliko na kifana, na kia na sana, liko kwa mba ine tume, abame tume hitwa na Christo eso. So, droku pa ngaria mstaro saba, but unto everyone of us is given grace. According to the measure of the gift of Christ. So, tunakuwa tse mstaro saba, nikwa mba, ni kama Paul saba kwa hii. Jesus has gifts. Ama e so, na de la masakupani. Ako na iPhone, ako na Samsung, ako na katululu, ako na zote. Sasa saba kwa mba, kizi nikonazo. Ama saba kwa mba, kizi yesu akonazo. Ata patiwa kila moja, we shika hi, we shika hi, we shika hi. Kwa sa baba ya neema abame patiwa. Ku manishika kwa mba, kuna ona ngapatiwa gixxulani. Hangeza na nani kwa sa baba wa na hiyo neema. So, tu biyango da ya koo, unapana muto anafanya kitu. Elewa ya kwa mba, anafanya kulingana neema aliopatiwa na Kristo. So, Jesus gives us gifts and gives us grace according to the gifting. Cause sa baba tuwa Mungu, without the grace, ama pasipo de neema, kunamabo ha wesi kutenda. Because you don't have the grace. Na niwa saba kati mina saba kwa mba, kio ta kanisa ni kuwa fana. Ute ipatiwa neema ya kuwa trecher la wakanisa. Utakuwa kwa mba be iba sadaka, because hauna neema ya kuwa trecher la wakanisa. Ma na trecher la wakanisa, ni muto anapukea presa, hata kama kunama hitaji. Hata kama kunashida, hakuna si kwa ta chokozile presa, asuluisha shida zake. Samana. Asuluisha shida zake kwa sa baba, neema inantoshia kutasita presa ku ingine, hata kama akonazo. Lakini wena kipatiwa presa, na hauja patiwa neema. You've not been gifted to be a trecher. Na you don't have the grace to be a trecher. Muto Mungu tu kuta kwa mba, hii the preso me kula, umebelika kwa shuguli zako. Umesimaliza, musho ku kitana, ku kitana wakanisa ni. Tunataka wa wio gozo kuje, wena kwa sa baba likula sadaka, kunatroba kaniso nena kanise kine. Na unanza kua onge mba baba haya neto. Oh, unajule kanisa, hawa nanga roho, ile kanisa, hawa na mureke. Si kwa sa baba wa na neema, hawa na murekeo. Ni kwa sa baba uli niye katika ofisi, ama huku patiwa neema ya kere. That's how the Bible say kwa mba, according to the gifting, are you given grace? So, elewa, the first and the most important thing kuwa elewa. What has God called me to do? Mungu me nita kwa ofisi gani. Ukisha elewa ni ofisi gani, ama ni garama gani, Mungu wa veku patiwa. Sasa elewa kwa mba kufanya ile kazi, haita kwa ni isu, haita kwa ni shida. Because God cannot give you a gift without the grace to enable you to achieve what you're supposed to achieve. Because by grace, that you are able to go where we are going. It is my grace that you accomplish what you're supposed to accomplish, pasipo kukazika. Sa baba una kuta kwa mba, pasipo neema, muto Mungu utachoka, utainomi konu, na utatoroka. Usena maana mefika, mene si koo. Lakini maana Mungu abakupatiwa gifting, anakupatiwa grace. Hata garama ya kulipile neema, ha woni kama ni muziko. You can't sit as a, as a bade. Cause sa baba na fanya, kwa sa baba na fikwa mba, it is part and parcel of you to do it. Nese niya kusipofanya, unakosa money, cause we have the grace to do it. Niwa kuta saba tu mutoa Mungu. Mungu kama de putiwa ofisi amchugais. You can never be an effective pastor, because you don't have the grace to run that office. Diwa apa paula n'ukia saba kwa mba, yes, we have one Father. Yes, we have one God. Yes, the God is in all of us equally. Una kuta, tu kiri katiwa, kitabu cha ya no chakare. Una kuta kwa jamaa ito dada, korana birama. Si komoja kwa Mungu, kwa Miamusa. Woume kifanya mtakatifu sana. Una tusimamia, apa kwa sa baba n'ekikia mtakatifu. Hata sisi Musa kumehitwa, tsue beke ya koo kumehitwa. Pakamusa kauliza. You sons of Levites. Do you consider it a small thing? That God has brought you close? To serve in the temple? Pakamana kwa kwa the priesthood. Cause sa korana dada, na birama, abiri, abiri ni. Abirama, wa liko mefika kio wa kasa kwa mba. How can Moses be the only prophet here? How can Aaron be the only high priest? We also are Israelites, like Moses. Since water is Israeli, ba biyeto alikwa Jacob. Na kwa hivo, kwa sa baba biyeto alikwa ni Jacob. Na since water is Israeli. Kuani ni, Musa kifanya kwa mba, ndio n'ezo kwa tunabiti peke. Kuani ni, Aaron n'ajua tu n'ezo tu taviu peke. Na una kuta, Mungu specifically. Adesa ma kwa mba, na kaka waana wa la, Levites. Wa kuja karibu kusaidia kazi katika hekano. Na elewa mutoa Mungu, ku liko na makabila kumi na mbini. So, kati mataifa kumakabila kumi na mbini, Mungu akachakuwa Musa. Na Aaron kwa mba kuani, na Musa na kuani, na Musa kama nabi. Ala wala ona ingine wote wa Lev, kwa sa baba ta Musa, ali kwa ni wa Levites. Wala ingine kwa ni kwa ni wa lawi, kama Musa. Lakini una kuta kwa mba, litsa wako wa wa lawi. Musa na Aaron nakapatiwa a special grace. Lakini ya wakona pana, even as we are Levites, we can also become priests. Na maana kwa saba kwa mba, na Mungu muniya kasa kwa mba, okay. Kamani ku hivo, chukwene filmose. Mwe ndoka katika sanu kula aga, ile amba itakuwa metoamatawi, kuiye dele mehita. Na kaka niseme mutoa Mungu, God is not confused. Our God is a God of order, plan, and purpose. So, Mungu, anapanga kila kitu katika pangidio wa, kiaja changa likiwa. Na niwa kuta, elipofika wakati waku prove, who God has called. Mungu ali prove, ni Aaron ali kwa ameita. Siyo, ah, siyo korana, naskoriade. Litsa kwa mba tu alikwa ni Levites. Niwa nasema mutoa Mungu, when Paul writes the book of the Church of Ephesians. Na na wa kwa mba, but unto everyone of us, anakwa kwa mba, understand you people of Ephesians. Ni yo are in first, so elewa we ni. Ya kwa mba, kila tu, ame patiwa neema, kulingana de la ma ba Kristo repani. So, never ever try, diwa kwa mba, never ever try. To be that which God has not gifted you. If God has not gifted you, don't try to walk in it. You will never succeed, because you don't have the grace for it. Na una kuta kina kona what happened eventually. Musa kasa mama kasa kwa mba, kama mutakufa kifua cha kawaida. Kama watuingide, bas, Mungu waleita. Lakini kama dunie kapa suka de uemeza lini wote, niwa utajua Mungu alenita. Na maana kwa saba kusama, kiega kitabu cha Exodus, fanya kwa mba kwe tu somi. Ukingene kitabu cha Exodus, bina saba kwa mba, baba Musa kunena haya. Dunie ni pasuka, korana, dada, na gurpiake, na bibi, na ototo wote, dunie ni pasuka wa kamezo. So, mutoa Mungu, it is very important as a believer. First and foremost, to identify the gifting that God has called you. Once you may identify your gifting, understand your kwa mba, you have the grace. Then you can now walk in that grace effectively. Na kumbuke, with the gifting, there comes the faith to operate in that gifting. There comes the anointing to enable you to achieve what God wants you to achieve in that gifting. Cause sa baba, kitiwa Kwanza, neema inakuwesha kufumilia mamba basi ya kawaida. Neema inakusaidia kustahinili. Mamba wa nimazito, amba indugu dada kawaida kifikia, atabaksida ya prachana na Yeshu. So, neema inakutia nguvu ya kusimama pa. Imani nayo, inakusaidia kufanya mamba esee ya kawaida. Ma na maana kwa saba kwa mba, calling those things that are not as they are. Ama kusewa kuita, mabo ya siyo koe ku ali kama ya lipo. Yet you call things that akuna mtungida ame ona. But you have faith, hata kama ite onekana, ite kuja kutendeka. So, through the gifting that God has given you, atakuikui with faith. Maana people are doubting. People are not seeing any destiny, people are not seeing any progress. But through kwa sa baba gifting and the grace you have upon you, you can see the victory before you manifest it. Kuwa fana. Musa nipofika kwa ye bahari ya shama. Wana wa Israeli, sa baba ha okona furo kama ya Musa. Wa ndia ndaliya bahari, wa kabakila na swali. Ite zetanai ze tufuke hi bahari. How is it possible? Kitiwa Kwanza hatu na mashua. Kitiwa pini pekinata kwa amejiwa ko gelia. Kitiwa tato alikwa na mezigo, na watoto, amafa mewato kwa ye bahari, wa natakana kufuka. Wa kulingana na ile gifting Mungu ali patiwa Musa, ha kukua nayo. The grace Musa kusimama kua diasiri, ha kukua nayo. The faith that God is going to come through. Na hape giswa kwa bahari niyachana, wa na Israeli wa Peter, ha kukua nayo. Niwa maana kuta maana kwa saba kwa mba, na wakamuliniya Musa. Wa kandia Musa angeliwa na de shiwa makuja, leo tu takuja kuisha kwa bahari, sisi leo tu me kufa. But Moses had the faith, kusema kwa mba, we are going across. We have faith that you are going to the promised land. Na kwa sa baba, Moses de alikona the gifting, na alikona the faith. Musho Mungu ali fana the faith that Musa deserve to exercise. Na mahari ya shama kafunguka, wana isero lo kwa Peter. So, mutoa Mungu, the Bible says, but unto everyone of us is given grace. According to the measure of the gift of Christ. Ina man na pia kwa mba, with the gifting, there is faith. Na niwa kuta kwa mba, sasini tari kani si tu kwa tu kiaza. Kuna wato alikuma kwa mba hatu tafaulu. I have no problem with them. Wa kasa kwa mba kani sa tu jigi, I have no problem with them. Cause sa baba, gani, the faith that I had ya kwa mba tu ta jiga, ha kukua nayo. Una kuta, sometimes when you don't have the faith, you look at your ability and your strength. Una n'aka kutikimanale uwezo konao, katika hani ya kibira dani. Yet what God is looking at, Mungu ha angali kila unauesa. Anataka uino imani yako za ini ya uwezo wako, za ini ya mani una ona. Umone kitu mbacho ona tuwa watungina hawa oni. Cause sa baba, Mungu anakupatiwa gifting. And with the gifting that comes with it. So, na diklear mabo, amba muto akikati niyaza kusikira na kuta fakari. Ha oni kuli inaenda, ha oni kuli utafaulu. Cause sa baba, kikuamgaliya, una kwa mba kwazo me shiwa, ha una kaki tu. Sasa wa kuta, utafanya hi, utafanya ajee. Na fini kiyangalia, kiyangalia, una kwa mba, zile connection na joko nazo, has led to kusaidia. Lakini una kuta kwa mba, because of the gifting, the faith Mungu alikupatiwa. Una saba kwa mba, with God, all things are possible. Cause sa baba, God has also ministered to you. Faith that will carry you through, abata kubeba baba fika kiwango, wete kufaulu, no tana kufaulu. That's what Gana produced saba kwa mba, are going back to as a six, saba kwa mba. One God and Father of all, who is above all, through all, and in you all. So, as much as we have one God, the Father of all of us, who is in all of us. But elewa kwa mba, a kisita de mamba a gifting, we operate on different levels. So, when you talk about anointing. Anointing niwa kuse ta sa, for a specific purpose. Sa baba una kuta kwa mba, even in the Old Testament. Niwa muto afanyika femme, ali kua na fanta na tio ma futa, ali kua anointed to be a king. Anointed to be a prophet. So, kara kwa empowered, kufanya kazi effective katika ile ofisi. Na anafanya bade ya anointing. Ukiya ya kia, wafani moto is Israeli. When you follow the biblical order, una kuta kwa mba, no prophet was not anointed. In gawate kuna wa cha, there are very few, wa na mabo kuwalele na wata directly. But it doesn't matter, the true anointing starts in the spiritual. Niwa kuja kwa physical. Mimi nikikupaka ma futa. I am supposed to kuanoint as what has already been done in the spiritual realm. So, ya muto ni kuconfound what was already been done. So, it is God who anoints you for a specific purpose. Since wa na damu tu, ni kuja tu go saba kwa mba, wa kika, tu meshuudia. Na tuwa, tuwa gaza beda out ya kwa mba, this brother, this sister is anointed. So, now, once you have received the anointing. It is the ability that you are given to do what you are supposed to do. If you fail, how fail because you are not anointed? You are failing because of your mokomvivu. Or, when ni mutoa mba, kutochukule mabo pozite vidi nasai. And remember chant of God, we are singing verses 5, 6, or 7. Remember chant of God, that we shall give an account one day before the presence of God. Niwa kutia ma futa fanya kazi flani, what happened? I gave you grace, nikama kwa de paka na neema, what happened? Oh, na tio Mungu wato alikona shikongumo, alikona kichongumo. Wa tawena kichongumo, ye kichongumo, niwa patiwa ma kusudi, kwa sa baba hii, you have the grace. Wa tawena kusumbua, osiona wato na kusumbua. He's sabu de neema Mungu wa nakupatiwa kusaidia, kufanya ile kazi. Mamba mani ku kaseisha haraka, ato kweke de kwa polisi, excuse me, kama ni kitu. Cause sa baba, the grace sustains you. Na tanga tu patiwa fano, miena kala hi ya Peter. Ilewa isha, niwa kwa li shudia pa maragada, kini n'te ndobe tu kwa sa baba ma kuskiya. Tu liwa sisi wato wakuke shakira siku. Sasa una kuta, wakua ma ombe, umeomba, umeomba kabisa. Lakini ndugu abaya komulini, anakuangalia, analuisa, unezo joko ma sama widi. Bina takuimbaka wiko kama wote. How can you pray for three hours, ah, four, five hours? Bina kuimbaka wiko kama wote, ya saba kwa mba. Uyo akor, betio obufu la ma pepo, isi Mungu ni roha wa ma pepo. Sasa una kuta, wa ndugu na shirkiya, na kwaza kufunga pepo. Aba hayiko, wa na kuita vagina, amai siya kawaida, vagina mayo, hide it to go for other shangwe. Lakini una kuta kwa mba, because of the grace, you don't feel the weight. Cause sa baba, ya neema kusiki, unaheto uisharati, mudefwa. Lakini kwa sa baba ya neema, unaheto mudefwa ina bausi kia dani, na bausi kia dani, kwa sa baba. The grace is keeping you. The grace, ya la kisha kwa mba, you remain focused. That's how saba kwa mba, when God gives you a gift. Niwa paula maana kwa saba, saba, tanga tu kere. But unto everyone of us is given grace, samana. According to the measure of gifting. Kulingana na kipimo, chadarama, ala cha gift umepatiwa, umepatiwa neema, ame na toshana nayo. So, when people do whatever they want to, my grace is sufficient. So, whatever you are going through, my grace is sufficient. So, don't focus on what you are going through, focus on the So, don't focus on what you are going through, focus on the grace of God. Wana sefe. So, unese imagine de mutu mungu, paula de mui, ana ombea watu wa nakufa, yutekas. Paula liko kumkutanu, my friend, akamubiri, akamubiri masasita sa saba, ekafika. De maleto yutekas, usidizi kapata, akangu gachini, uko juwa godofa, akangu gachini. Wa mungu gachini yutekas akakufa, paula akabiwa, paula kaidaka chko yutekas, akamukumatiya kamombea, yutekas akafuka. Lakini paula ba de mui ba na musumbua. Na nasewakomba, niri mumba mungu anyo dole de mui ba, lakini mungu kasa komba, neema ya nekutoshaa paulo. Pa ba na naaliya, pa putiya neema kutoshaa. So, sometimes, de sabu nasewakomba, it is not about you, it's about Christ. Unesa kona putia crisis, bila paula nasewakomba, we make many rich while we remain poor. Paula na ombea watu, wa kafani kio, wa kafani kio, wa kaongezek, wa kanawiri, lakini paula kufika kio ngwaya. Kusabu gani, ali kua na neema, adesambe share of God, the grace that God has given you is to help other people. Se kujitete, neema mungu anekupatiya ni kusaidia, watuengi na kusonga be. Wewe neema, ina ba mungu anekupatiya, ni amekusaidia, kue ndelea, kufanya kilo na sani, kufanya. So, siyaka kula la mika komba, flani, ni kamombea, flani, ni kamombea, flani, ni kamombea, sasa wa meenda, mimi ni mebaki, ah ah. Remember chant of God, we are in this earth temporarily, towa pa kama udanfukisa. Now, at the end of it all, what I am looking forward to as an individual, de mungu ya nde komba, welcome, you faithful servants, that's what I'm looking forward to. When I make money in this earth or not, it is irrelevant. The most important komba, what am I going to get eternally? Ma na hi ya kona kuda ndenyanganya, what am I going to get eternally? So, for now, by the grace of God, I might go now. Let us focus and sustain whatever gifting mungu anepatiya, and let us be faithful. So that we may achieve that which God has commissioned to us. A lot of us mungu mamba gifts, but unto everyone of us is given grace according to the measure of the gift of Christ. So, de mungu, paula hapo zuma mamba gift of Christ. I want us to understand the komba, in the Bible, there are different types of gifting. In the Bible, there are different kinds of gifting. Na tanga de kubedi kama ukidogo, ana kutiwa kuli kuamewa ya mkuwe. So, to kiaangalia, katika, to teleno tu juju, a lot of story by there. Twenty verses eight, kusabu komba, wherefore, he says, when he ascended up on high, he led captivity captive and gave gifts unto men. Verses nine, now that he ascended, what is it, but he also descended fast into the lower parts of the earth. He that descended is the same as also that ascended above from above all heavens, that he may fill all things, and he gave some to me, some to become apostles, some prophets, some prophets, some pastors, and teachers, for the perfecting of the saints, for the work of the ministry, for the defining of the body of Christ, till you all come to the unity of the faith. Now, to verses, uh, seven, sorry, eight. Seven, nasewakomba, the gift of Christ. So, kia nde kusoma from verses eight, inasumuzi yesu neku from Sarabani, alia umbosa, wenge, na akapatiya garama wa adam. So, to go eight, afiyasoma bebe. So, sa, the one who ascended, who is Christ Jesus, gave gifts to men, akapatiya garama wa adam. So, na na kusi kempu mungu, there are gifts that Jesus Christ gave to the body of Christ. And then there are gifts that God gave to the body of Christ. And then there are gifts that the Holy Spirit gave to the body of Christ. Twasena, the gifts of the Holy Spirit. To see south, kubetke, in the book of Ephesians, chapter four, two verses eight. From what pa kweja nami, the book of First Corinthians, chapter twelve. Ah, First Corinthians, chapter twelve, verses one, inasamae. Now, about the spiritual gifts. Taka twasia, now, about the spiritual gifts, the spiritual, nasama, this is amplified version. The spiritual endorsements given by the Holy Spirit. Brothers and sisters, I don't want you to be uninformed. Iti rudi koki jeps, verse komba, uh, ki jeps nasamae. Now, concerning spiritual gifts, brethren, I will not have you ignorant. You know that you are gentle, so, that's what I want to focus on. Now, about spiritual gifts, and they are amplified version. The spiritual endorsements given by the Holy Spirit. Brothers and sisters, I don't want you to be uninformed. So, basically, introduction in First Corinthians, chapter twelve, verses one, komba. Wanuku wa pendo, tunaposumuzi garama zaroontakatifu. Yene kua de kaka shike. The gifts of the Holy Spirit. Ephesians four, ibetu mbia, now, the gifts of Jesus Christ. Korean nasewakomba, spiritual gifts that are given by the Holy Spirit. Paula nasewakomba, I don't want you to be ignorant. Muska indi kama watu abao, hamwere. So, kia nde kusoma, okingia verses one, ni meruka. Ni meruka pokha verses four, nasama komba. Now, there are diversities of gifts by the same spirit, and the difference of administration by the same Lord, and the diversities of operations by the same God, which is working all in all. Now, okiaangalia verses four, inasumuzi nasewakomba, now concerning diverse gifts, it is the same Holy Spirit. Concerning administrative gifts, difference of administration, by the same Lord, and the diversities of operations, by the same God. So, basically, de mutu mungu, kiaangalia umsari, ina kune shakomba, kuna gifts of the Holy Spirit, kuna administrative gifts by the Jesus that is the Lord, then kuna diversities of operations, which is of God the Father, but they are all the same. So, after all, na kwa ndeket, this is a great, nasewakomba, I want you to understand that when you speak in tongues, it is the Spirit, the Holy Spirit that given you, the gifts are speaking in tongues. But understand, as much as the Holy Spirit has given those gifts, it is under the operation of the Trinity, whereby, wese nasewakomba, I have received this from the Holy Spirit, where God the Father is not involved. I have received this from God the Father, where Jesus Christ is not involved. I have received this from Jesus Christ, where God the Father or the Holy Spirit is not involved. But greater nasewakomba, out of the Trinity, every one of part or portion of the Trinity is giving out gifts, oma administrative, ama operational, but all of these things come from one God. So, ki rudi katika Ephesians, ziretume soma, oh sorry, kambala, 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 Ephesians. Okiaangalia, First Corinthians, chapter twelve, inasumuzi komba, the Holy Spirit giving us gifts. Alava kia nde kusoma, inata kupatiya breakdown of what the Holy Spirit has given to the body of Christ. Now, na kumbuke, yesterday, koka kia doga nasewakomba, it is a must that I must go. But even as I go, I will send you the Holy Spirit. So, now the Holy Spirit has come with the gifting. The Bible, zuma, in the book of, Ephesians, komba, alia, alia enda chimi alepachi, na kapea na garama kuwa adam. Now, that is speaking about Jesus Christ. To ki rudi, in the book of Romans, chapter twelve, to ta anganiya the administrative, ama the operational giftings amba na God the Father has given. Let's go to the book of Romans, chapter twelve, verses three. Let's read from verses three. Inasamae, for by the grace of God, given to me, inasuma amplified version. For by the grace of God given to me, I say to everyone of you, not to think more highly of himself and of his importance and ability than he ought to think, what is so many, so many places, they are, they are, ki jeps, so many. For I say through the grace given unto me to every man, that is a man you not to think of himself more than he ought to think, but to think somebody according as God has dealt to every man the measure of faith. That's what is nasewakomba, with every gifting, there must be grace. With every gifting, after grace, there must be faith. So, now, kuba nasewakomba, here, verses three, for I say through the grace given to me, to every man that is a man you, not to think of himself more highly than he ought to, but to think somebody according as God has dealt to every man the measure of faith. So, now with grace, there is also faith involved. For as we have many members in one body, and all members have not the same office. So, okiaangalia verses four, zuma komba, we are members of one body. And what is the body? The body is the body of Jesus Christ. So, mutu mungu, if you are, what is a rudi ni ma kido? If you are not scripturally sagranded soundly, what is a rudi? If you are not scripturally soundly, sombali, somali. Oda buta komba, oda buta mukora wa mandiko. Atakuja kuchanganya na hi mandiwa, nasamae, na isu nasumuzi amu, ye nasumuzi yesu, si nasumuzi aro mupakatifu. See contradictions, contradiction, so who is who? But who can understand, soundly rightly dividing the word of God correctly, how to a little confusion? So, I'll bring you to that point, ba da, kido, before to my session. For we, man of kuta komba, as much as, inasumuzi, God giving the measure of faith, ba nasumuzi, ya nini, Christ, the body of Christ, of whom we are part of that body, Jesus Christ being the head, and we being that body. For as we have many members in one body, and all members have not the same office, so we make many and one body in Christ, and every one member of another. So, as much as we talk of the spiritual gifts given by Christ, gifts given by the Holy Spirit, and the administrative, ama operational gifts given by God the Father, we are one body, one member of Jesus Christ, of the body of Jesus Christ, whereby there is no division amongst us. Twenty eight, verses six. Having then gifts differing according to the grace that is given to us, whether office, let us prophesy, according proportion of faith, or minister, let us wait on ministering, or the teacher, on teaching, or that exhorter, ame encourages, on exhortation. He that gives, let him do with simplicity. He that administrate with diligence, he that shows mercy, mercy cheerfulness. Every to angali, amplified version, now, nasamae. And sometimes amplify, in amplify mabo na kara kweja wasai. So, amplify nasewakomba, since you have gifts that differ according to the grace given us, given to us, each of us is to use them accordingly. If one has the gift of prophecy, let him speak a new message from God to his people in proportion to the faith he possesses. If, 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 in the act, if service, in the act of serving, or he who teaches in the act of teaching, or he who encourages in the act of encouragement, he who gives with generosity, he who leads with diligence, he who shows mercy in caring for others with cheerfulness. So, kiaangalia, pa da, onakuta komba, kuna giftings, hapa tu na mua, and based on God has given with faith. Wana sefe, God has given it faith. So, let me, let me, let me go up through there. Inasumuzi, the gift of prophecy. So, elewa mutu mungu, when you go to the book of Ephesians, chapter four, it talks about, Jesus has given some to become prophets. But now, the gifts of the Holy Spirit, one of them is the gift of prophecy. Na de keni rudi lewa komba, there is a difference between the gift of prophecy and the office of a prophet. Anybody can operate in the gift of prophecy, but not everybody can become a prophet. Wana sefe, able to this statement. Everybody, or anybody, can operate in the gift of prophecy, but not everybody can operate in the office of a prophet. So, simply because you are operating in the gift of prophecy, does not confirm that you are a prophet. The same case, when there is need, mungu katuwe kwa chototekile. When there is need, God will use any vessel that is available to accomplish his purpose. To gru katika gani, olakana, onakuta komba, wa katsa, ali kua na winda David. Na sola katiya komba, David amena nayof. Sola katuma maski, kweka kumadisa David nayof, wa kaenda. Wale kufiko moka shikwa na roho, wa kaza kuomba. Ekafika mushoye sola kama kuenda moniere. Ma ni kuba nasewakomba, sola kufika kule, na kashibo na roho mupakatifu, na kaza ku prophesy. Pakamusemo ekaza kusamkomba, isol also a prophet. And in reality, Sol was not a prophet. It is just that in the presence of the Holy Spirit, now by the fact that there is a presence of the Holy Spirit, ahaanza kutohatarases prophesying, because I believe the presence of the Holy Spirit. So, even us today here, the presence of God can come down every day. Aga tutikuta tu naza ku prophesy. Mutu mungu, be careful. Usiamuka nasewakomba, a prophet, because I prophesy. Hata kama li tjo, na diu katimia, usiamuka nasewakomba, mimi ni nabii. Kusabu mutu mungu elewa hi, the moment utadi play, you are a prophet, hata mashe tani is nasikia. Hata e bilishe nasikia. Now, you don't have the grace to operate as a prophet. You only have a grace to operate in the gifting of the office of the prophecy. Lakini sasa me jingiza kuofisi, ya kusabu you are a prophet, now, makal, hata kama nimapepo, wata kuni lukia na vita kinabi. Siyaki garama kinabi, diyo de sasa u ni nabini hatari. Sasa kama likona tumia, tumatoka, tu nasa ina preschool, na nza kutiwa ma pepo ame graduate. Kusabu gani, yesu, nabii akuna opako wa ju. Nabii akuna neema ya ju, nabii akuna imani ya ju, sisi tu meisha. Sasa onakuta mutu mungu, na pipo mabo, otu zibia, haza, sisa, kusabu di tangaza. Ya wu be katika paspo, kwa sisa sisi. Onakuta, ena here, in a amplified version, nasewakomba, since you have the gifts that differ according to the grace given to us, each of us, it is, it is, sorry, each of us is to use them accordingly. If someone has the gift, you may go very specific, if somebody has the gift of prophecy, let him speak a new message. Lakini nasewakomba, I prophesy. I prophesy. Mutu mungu, buta tu ita. Kusabu, eh, hi vite, no kwa too much. Ha ite kwa too much, wendo me itana. Konfano saisi. Oh, utoke tuwa pa na rungu, una nda wa kambiye jesi, kusema onakara kuwa tuwa wa na rungu. Alu, wewe na rungea, tafuta klaso japo, kapa na 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 rungu, buta saksu. Lakini na kwa kambiye jesi na rungu, oda na kivu, kusabu gani, kume niya katika liksini ya kwa. Oda no jesa definition one, definition zero. Yele, yele championship, kiko pechifama sautif, ye ndo de giya, na nda kutesa premia li. Oda na, oda na moto. So, de onakuta komba, as the Bible has clearly put it, with every gifting, there is grace. With every gifting, there is faith that you are supposed to operate in. With every gifting, there is an anointing that will enable you to be effective in that office. So, de kasa komba, the Holy Spirit, gifting of the Holy Spirit, zinapatiya in the book of First Corinthians, chapter twelve. The operational giftings of God, zinapatiya in the book of Romans, chapter twelve, Romans, chapter twelve. Gifting of the Holy Spirit, zinapatiya na, First Corinthians, chapter twelve. And the giftings of Jesus Christ, zinapatiya in the book of Ephesians, chapter, Ephesians, chapter four. Now, before twenty five, you want to move. Uh, I want to switch some other scriptures up. To angaliye, let me see. Eh, bufuko kugya nabi, uh, First Corinthians, chapter twelve. Tu ko, okay, tu ko Romans, tu ko, mier First Corinthians, chapter twelve. Taka tu song from verses nineteen, First Corinthians, chapter twelve, verses nineteen.